I will call the December fourteenth, two thousand and ten meeting of the Acton School Committee to order at this time. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
I would like to request to speak with you at the beginning of your executive session.
Nine. We'll call it nine one. The other afternoon, nine two. Or we'll call it nine two. Any other adjustments to the agenda? You have any?
Mr. Howard?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, approval of the minutes of the school committee meeting. First of all, the school committee meeting of November ninth.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November ninth.
I'll second.
Show me.
Show you?
Yeah. Excuse me. Do you people have the wrong name tags? If anybody's watching this, you break it. I'm trying to make it.
Just a spelling of the word. Instead of irrigation, it's arrogation. I'm sure that it's not.
Five point four. Then.
Yes.
It's all right. I mean, I'm sure it's nothing but a.
That was something.
We can have arrogation.
Emily was little. She used to get irritated, so.
Right.
It's been moved and seconded that we accept the minutes as printed without one correction on the typo. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, so signify. Five and oh. Now we'll have a motion to accept the meeting of the special school committee meeting that was held on November eighth. You just got the.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November eighth.
I'll second.
You must have two.
I think I have one.
No, I have one and I have two.
It wasn't in the packet.
Yeah, I had one in my packet.
You did have one in your packet? Okay. I didn't have one in my packet.
You have one now?
I didn't have one. It's been moved and seconded that we accept the meeting of the minutes of the special school committee. Any discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Comments from the public? John.
Has there been any progress on the contract talks from last year? And if they have.
On the con- on the contract.
We're in the middle of teacher negotiations. Is that what you're saying?
How about the one you were doing last year?
Support staff.
We finished that last year.
Okay. Could copies of that contract be given to the Warren Finance Committee?
Yeah, sure. It's public knowledge.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the public? Okay, then let's move on to communications and correspondence.
I have none.
You have none?
Well, I do, but Sandy will tell me about it.
All right, then. Let's move on to the superintendent's report.
I think most everything I have is on the agenda that will be discussed regarding the beginning of budget process, calendar, those types of things. So I'll reserve that until later.
Okay. Principal's report.
My turn. Well, I tried to give you a brief summary of so much that has been going on since our last meeting. I do want to highlight, the first thing mentioned in my report is the internet safety. We had an informational day here in the afternoon for the students in grades four through eight. We then offered an opportunity for parents to be more informed in the evening. Unfortunately, only one parent was in attendance. But we are fortunate enough to be able to offer additional means of giving that information out. There will be possibly paper information going home with students, a DVD available that parents could borrow to learn more about the internet and the features that no doubt many students are learning faster than the adults, and ways to keep your kids safe. But also talked about, our guest speaker Jane Hitchcock also spoke about how to help your children manage the internet and how to regulate access, what they should and shouldn't do online, and the seriousness of anything that they do online today. And that includes texting, cell phones, instant messaging. There are a lot of opportunities for wonderful and not so wonderful things to happen, so that was really important. Students got some of that information, and hopefully even on this channel, we'll be able to eventually offer more of that information in the future. Other things mentioned, the card making, the painting pals, Lego competition. It's all about the kids. After school clubs, I'm hoping after the start of the new year, we can offer more after school activities for students who are not currently involved in sports to again give more learning opportunities here at the school and keep kids busy. Do want to mention that we were fortunate that somebody came here, and it's two weeks ago now since I wrote the report, came up to the office and said his wife and he like to donate new clothing, new outdoor coats and mittens, et cetera, to schools, and would we be interested in taking some of the donations? And of course, we said yes. They were, there's no charge. There was no hidden agenda. It was just something that he and his wife does, and we were part of his routine visit, I guess, this year. So we got about eight to twelve assorted coats for boys and girls. All brand new. Tags are still on them so that if we see a child in need, we can address it right away. Community service hours, PTG has agreed to work with me to address students at this age level, especially the fourth through eighth graders who are doing extras for their classmates, for other kids, for the teachers, for the community members. I know a group of them helped make pies at Thanksgiving time. And so although it is a graduation requirement, twenty hours for high school students, I want to recognize that we have students here, and although it's not a requirement, I wanted to give them, you know, that recognition that it's really important to give back to their community, and we have really a lot of kids doing that already. As we know, we've got Mike getting the Acton News Network up and running. He is working to arrange students to be helping so that we have more events filmed about the school day, about what the kids are doing. And he assures me that he has been inundated with eager, eager reporters and cameramen ready to roll. So very excited about that. Again, another great learning opportunity for the kids, and I really appreciate Mike stepping up. Joan Nass is donating a desperately needed new American flag to the school. Ours is starting to fray, not just a little bit on the edges, but inches worth on the edges, so I'm pleased about that. Student council has been very busy and continues to come up with new things for us to do. Last Friday afternoon, if you were here, you would have seen the entire school bundle up, sneakers and all, and head out of the gym as a group, and we walked around the school and across the nature path and around. Student council has been trying to find spirit ideas, whole school participation ideas that do not cost parents any additional money. Most kids had sneakers or boots that they could throw on, and like I said, we bundled up because it was certainly, of course, one of the coldest days yet this year. And we got outside, and that was great. Basketball teams are off to a great start, winning their games and doing a fabulous job working as teams. I've got my teacher leaders continue to working on improving the RTI process and the overall school culture. And on the backside, it has our student stars of the month and the upcoming events. It's certainly been a busy last four or five weeks. Any questions?
Do we need to thank the people from the coats, or do they want to remain anonymous, or?
They gave us no way, no way of contacting them, so hopefully they'll just know that we really appreciate it.
I think maybe a letter to Joan Nass would be good.
Yes. I have put, and put it out there to the teachers as well, that any student that maybe it might match, and they would be writing a letter. So I'm hoping to have a few samples for her as well. It's really important to have it from the kids.
Very much so. How did the Lego competition go?
It went very well. Our Acton kids did not place in the top, but we do have a new Lego fan in our crowds. We've got Dick Neal volunteering with Pat Reeves and has been enjoying the challenge. And I'm hoping one of our after school activities in, through the winter months will be a Lego club. And Dick has already agreed to be a helper with that. A lot of problem solving engineering, a lot of challenges, and the greatest thing with the Lego, it combines the building skills that most kids know about Legos with a computerized program that has to be followed in order for these missions to be carried out, and then it's timed. So you have to do these multiple tasks in less than two and a half minutes. And you can't get to the next task until the first one before it is done. So it's really very, very challenging. And so we're hoping by having a Lego club, more kids, especially the younger ones coming up, will have practice problem solving before they get into a competition situation.
The whole Lego, Lego competition also involves getting up in front of judges as a team. The door is closed, and they have to present educational material on what they have just learned. Like one year it was flooding. They did something about flooding. I remember the kids. And how to stop the flooding from ruining our roads. But, you know, so there's a learning piece in there, but it's also that presentation. So public speaking is very good. I mean, it's so well rounded, that program.
This year's theme was on the human body, so they're doing the circulatory. There was a broken bone. And so they have to create these machines to bring the broken bone, you know, to repair it, to, so it is. It's always themed. And so all the problems are related to that topic, and, you know, it's a table about the size of these two tables together. And it really, the computer skills, they have to know how to program, and they have to then solve when, how come the machine didn't work? How come it stopped where it wasn't supposed to, or dropped off a piece of Lego where it wasn't supposed to? Just a lot of simple machines put into a very complex problem.
Good. Yes.
It was filmed this year too, so it'll be on the cable channel. The kids took cameras and filmed themselves.
Oh, great.
I don't know how it looks yet.
A little bit of movement.
Might be, but again, it's just a wonderful opportunity, and I'm thrilled to have another volunteer to help pad out. It's a big task.
The kids are very enthusiastic, the kids that are involved. Eric was involved this year, and he really, he really enjoyed it. And it gave me the opportunity too to see exactly what they do. Legos to me, you know, when I was a kid, I had Legos, but what they're doing with this club is pretty impressive.
It's very sophisticated.
I was, I was not able to go to Augusta with the kids. The day before the, the competition, I did go down when the club met and saw their presentation that they were taking to the state competition. And it was really neat to see, like Trish said, what these kids are able to do. It's really an awesome thing.
Good. Anybody have any questions or comments to Trish before we move on? Thank you, Trish.
You're welcome.
Special ed director's report.
Okay. My first paragraph talks about timeline compliance. One of the things that we need to be compliant on is all of our dates. When our referrals need to be finished within forty-five school days, that's the line that we need to be compliant on. This information is sent to the state. I received something from the state that told me that in, in a bunch of different areas that we were in a needs assistance group, which is either meets, needs assistance, or needs heavy assistance. So I was looking at that, and I had showed it to Bump and everything, and thinking about what I was going to do with that, and had called the state to ask them a question about one of those areas, and then within a week later, they came back. Because the data was two years old that they're doing. It's very hard for them to be current. And within two years, we had already changed things because I knew that data was like that. So then I got a nice little letter that said we now meet. So there's no more needs assistance. There's no phone call with the state, and I shared that with Bump too.
All is well, huh?
All is well in that one area.
Okay.
There's the ICAP, which is a continuation of something from last year that I will give them some information on in May. And that's the corrective action plan. I talked about interviewing and an ed tech for the grades three to six area. We need an ed tech in the morning and in the afternoon and not in the middle of the day, so we're trying to go part time. Because of the way the lunches fall with all of our ed techs, it's a harder time of day to service any kids because so many of them have lunch and recess at the same time, depending on which area you're working in. So this is going to be a one-year position or half year since we're at December now, and it's paid for by grant funds. We have two people who we have interviewed and are ready to make a decision on that, and they should be starting right after we come back in the new year. The new kitchen is all set up. We have a stove and a sink in Mrs. Reeves' old room. If you haven't seen it, you should take a walk down there. The floor was done also, and it's a nice little area. They should be starting to use that in the special ed area. And also, we've talked about others being able to use it, maybe setting up a schedule so that the social skills, life skills group has first, come first serve on that. But there's plenty of other times during the school day or after school for other groups, and it would be great for anybody to be able to use it. All IEPs have progress marked for the first trimester. When report cards go home, the special ed staff, teachers, OTPT, come up and mark all their IEP goals, and those also go home to the parents. Our December first count is in. They count all of the, well, special ed, I believe they do the regular ed students too at December first, but we do the special ed, and that's due by January fifteenth, but we're all done. It's all signed. It's all in. The ed techs get professional development every week. I meet with them once a month. We discuss the bullying curriculum being used in our school. This is the second discussion we've had on that because the ed techs are not always in the classrooms when it's going on since they service in math and language arts. A lot of the bullying curriculum is done during social studies, I believe. They found it very helpful, and they had a lot of really good questions, and I will continue with that next month with them, just going over some of that curriculum. Any questions?
How many, you said you have the count of special ed students as of December first, and how many is that?
Sixty-nine.
And, go ahead.
I'm just going to say, and how many are Sanford? How many go to Sanford out of that? Sixty-nine in this building?
Uh, nope. That's the total, and I think it's about twenty-five, twenty-seven. I can get that for you, the exact count.
And when you're talking about the part-time ed tech position, is this, they're going to come in in the morning and go home and then come back again in the afternoon? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, it's, it's, and for one year because the need is there because of the numbers of students and the classes that they're in. When you have a teacher and two ed techs working in grades three through six, and you have five classes in the three through six, and three staff members, and you have students who need in-class support, and at the same time, students who need to, need a specialized math class in the resource room, you quickly use up the people that you have in different classrooms. So that's what's going on here, but next year could be a different story, so we put it in as a one year. And we're looking to try to get them here from eight-thirty to ten-thirty, and then again in the afternoon. And I've also spoke with both of the candidates, and we also have some after school tutor hours to add to that, so. In the final process of that, and think that that will work out.
What grant money is that coming from?
That is coming from the, I believe it's the ARo funds. I had put in for a half-time high school ed tech because at the end of last year, we thought we needed a high school ed tech for half-time for a student. And I've already talked to the high school, and that is not the case, so that money is there. So I'll just notify them that we're going to use it in the elementary school instead of the high school. You're welcome.
Anybody have any other questions with Sandy? No? Thank you, Sandy.
You're welcome.
Okay, let's move on to committees. How about long-term planning committee?
We did an OED statement.
Is Andy not giving his report?
Oh, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
I apologize. Okay, let us go to the facilities director's report.
Thank you. I will keep it, keep it brief tonight. Quarterly water sample is taken on December first. We did get the results back without any problems. As Sandy mentioned, the life skills room is complete and ready for use. The petition between the cafeteria and the music room is also complete. Boiler system did require a couple of small repairs this month. I did provide Holly Hartley with assistance with the installation of the new steamer in the kitchen. We took advantage of Thanksgiving break to buff floors, as well as other small projects, cleaning projects throughout the building. We have sent good get well wishes to Bob Waite, who has been out for a while, and we're expecting him to be out for a while, probably after Christmas. Glenn Wallace Jr., who has been a substitute since I've been here, has been fantastic as far as stepping up to the plate. Initially, we didn't know how long Bob was going to be out, and he came forward and said that he would help us, whether it be for two days or two months, whatever we needed. So I was very fortunate that he was there and willing to help us. The other thing that is attached to my report is a request to send Jan Dealer a thank you for the Christmas tree, which she and her sons donated to the school this year. Brian and his boys had been raising Christmas trees for a number of years on their property, and I believe last year was the first year they started actually harvesting them. And Jan had offered to donate the tree, and we graciously accepted it. Richard Mishu came last week and decorated the tree, and it is a beautiful tree. The other thing that Trish also orchestrated, which she forgot to mention in her report, was we did do one fire drill this month as well as an evacuation drill.
New steamer, what funds were used for that?
I don't know because that was something that Holly had taken care of.
That's what I mean. It came from food service.
Yes.
It'll eventually come out of food service. But it wasn't necessarily in our budget to begin with. It's a very expensive piece of equipment, but we can't serve hot lunch without it, so.
The old boiler.
We had to find a way to buy it. So we'll figure that out.
Andy, the other question, I think it was last month, we were discussing the hood over the, just the new stove that you put in there.
Yes.
The question is, is the fire retardant system, did you get those answered, or?
I had spoken with the state fire marshal, and basically what I got out of that conversation was, is that a hood with a fire suppression system is required for commercial use. And this is technically not a commercial application, so it's not required. As you may or may not recall, when I had the stove wired, I had the electrical feeds put in in case we did need it, or in the future, if there's a different use that would require that system. Everything is in place, and it was just more cost effective to do it that way rather than have to start from scratch and go back into the panel and whatnot. So everything is there. If in the future we decide to change the use or the requirements change, it will be an easy upgrade. The other thing before I finish, long-term planning, when we met last month, we had a discussion about the cost of replacing the gym roof. I did speak with two contractors. One contractor got back to me almost immediately. It is sixty-eight hundred square feet, and he estimated it at around twenty thousand dollars for replacement.
Is that the flat part of the roof?
That is the pitched roof that is over the gym itself.
And that's shingles?
Shingles.
Sixty-eight hundred square feet?
Sixty-eight hundred square feet. It is to strip the existing shingles, put down two rows of ice and water shield, which gives you six feet on the bottom, and replace with a thirty air architectural, and it included removal of all related debris.
I think that's actually better than what we were originally discussing.
Yes. I have put together budget information, which I've forwarded to Superintendent Hadley for FY eleven and twelve, and I put twenty-five thousand dollars into capital improvement for that project.
You said that included removal at disposal of the rest.
Yes.
Okay, anybody have any questions?
Yes.
Did they have any times, or was there any reporting that you have to do as far as the fire drills and the evacuations that came out of here? And were those, I mean, how successful were they compared to past as far as orderly evacuation and everybody being accounted for?
We are, Trish can probably answer this better than I can, but we are required to do so many fire drills per year, required to do so many ex, uh. Evacuations, thank you, each year. And what we try to do is we record the time from when we start the alarm or the evacuation. We record the time from start to finish, and we get together after, and we look at ways to improve that time. All that stuff is recorded and documented.
So last time, six minutes.
Awesome.
From the time that the alarm was pulled till every single person was out and accounted for, out and back to them.
That's awesome.
Any, any other questions, Brandy?
One last question. Have you developed a maintenance schedule and operation for the generator? I know that generator has to be run every so often and stuff like that.
Yep.
Has that schedule already been established?
The generator exercises automatically once a week. I have put funds into next year's budget to cover the preventative maintenance on the generator. This year, the funds will be absorbed in my operating budget. Basically, the preventive maintenance will occur once a year. I budgeted a certain amount for fuel, and I didn't budget an excessive amount because what my hopes would be is if we had a catastrophic event where the generator ran for a long amount of time, we would get some type of fee or reimbursement to cover those costs.
And the last one is not a question, but kind of like a comment. I don't know if anyone has any experience in writing any letters requesting it. I know that the company that I work for, Jackson Lumber, does do quite a bit of contributions on the building side of materials. So the sixty-eight hundred square feet of the roofing, I know that they have the architectural shingles and the ice and water shield. So it might be something that, you know, if somebody writes something to them from the school that they might consider making a donation.
Afterwards, can you give me that?
Good to know.
And you'd also like to know that we've had, what, two or three opportunities this season already for the generator to actually kick in and operate, and it's worked perfectly.
Much to the children's. Lights flicker, yeah, comes right back on, oh. Yeah, you're not going home, guys, sorry.
Any other questions for Andy? Thank you for that report, which I almost.
Thank you very much.
Let's go on to, uh, committees. Long-term, you said, didn't meet, Richard?
No.
Okay, then let's go to the policy committee.
We met last week, and we discussed that eighth grade graduation class trip that was brought up, and, um, Trish did meet with us, and hopefully we hashed it out, and we have a first reading here tonight.
Okay. Any other committees to report?
Teacher negotiation committee has met, and we are meeting on next Monday, or this coming Monday, the twentieth.
Okay. Let's go on to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, first of all, we have the second reading of three, uh, policies. The timeout rooms and therapeutic restraint, and the timeout rooms and therapeutic restraint administrative procedure, and physical restraint. JKA A, JKA A dash R, and JKG. Second reading, can we have a motion on all of these policies together?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, that we accept policies JKA A, timeout for rooms, therapeutic restraint, JKA AR, timeout rooms and therapeutic restraint administrative procedure, and JKG, physical restr- physical restraint, new business? What's, is that the right physical new, just physical restraint?
Just physical restraint.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Tough when you copy and paste.
Yeah, okay.
Spell check doesn't matter at all.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting these? So moved. Uh, new business. Under new business, the, uh, policy committee has given us three new policies to look at for our first reading on the eighth grade graduation class trip. Would anybody, before we vote, vote on these, would anybody like to say what kind of changes were made from what we previously had, or?
Go ahead.
Well, it was, um, it came about as a general discussion amongst the seventh and eighth grade teachers that we wanted to be much more inclusive, rather than exclusive in our, uh, the graduation policy. So, um, over the last couple of years, it, the policy's been in place actually for several years. Um, we noticed that it just, it didn't allow for kids who are not a behavior problem, but maybe struggled academically, to participate. Um, and so the changes were designed to still, uh, be an incentive, you know, to good behavior, to, to being a good student, but not, um, punitive to the point where it excluded too many students. So, we've got that, um, a student would have fewer than five out of school suspensions in that eighth grade year. So, that would be the first one.
The first change, okay.
And then if a student were to have earned between five and ten out of school suspensions, that would, would require a meeting with the principal to discuss whether or not they were a behavior risk, a safety risk at that time. And it sounds like, wow, that's allowing for a lot, but in, um, most, uh, discipline policy manuals now, you know, the procedures that we're following, it is not, if a child misbehaves at the beginning of the school year, let's say they have a, a serious infraction in September or October, they could get five days right away. So, they could make one mistake and have five or six out of school. Um, and yet, they may have learned their lesson, and behavior is not an issue for the rest of the school year, safety is not an issue. And we didn't want to penalize a child who had made improvements, who had made those changes.
Okay.
Um, the third one was more than ten. The student was automatically ineligible. Now, I say that, understanding that in your policy elsewhere, you do have it written that a parent could still appeal. So, it doesn't re- doesn't remove the appeal process. And then the, the last piece was six or fewer administrative days of detention. And, um, at the classroom level, a teacher may say, you know, you need to stay here in this classroom instead of going to that fun event or something because you only were. That is not what we're talking about here. Here, we're talking about where the principal has said, you crossed the line on this discipline issue, and I am gonna give you after-school detention or in-school detention. And so it said, again, six or fewer administrative days. So, they could be given one at a time, or even an hour of disca- detention. But if they reach the sixth form, then we'd say that then they're, again, they're a behavior and safety risk. And this refers to the, the Canterbury Lake trip. Um, it requires to be safe, you know? It requires that we need to know that out in such a public setting, in such a large area, that our children are all going to be accounted for and behaved. And so that, other than that, we wanted kids to be able to participate in that final celebration. For many kids, it is the end of nine years of being together.
Okay, any questions for anybody about any of the others?
Hopefully this works, we can always revise.
We need to look at it again.
Yeah, I mean, I do think, I think it's not.
We have had.
The details are spelled out more clearly. We've come across situations where there was no area have, to have discussion. And I think the way the specific trip requirements, um, are laid out, it allows for a procedure, but also a chance for discussion if somebody falls into a unique situation. Um, so there's always a chance for administrative input, there's always a chance for appeal to the school committee. Um, it also allows for special education students to be judged according to their IEPs. So, again, if somebody is, is existing and succeeding in school under special circumstances, we would not want a policy to exclude. We want to include the kids.
And we have had this dealt with this just in the past couple of years, and it was with a special ed student, I believe, so. Okay, can we have a motion to accept these three new policies on the first reading?
I'll make, make a motion to accept them. I just wanted one change on the IICA, because I think the cross-reference should also cross-reference IICA dash E, the actual letter that goes home. I just, you know, wanna put that at the bottom. Otherwise, um, except I I.
Oh, cross-reference, down to the bottom.
At the bottom.
I I.
IICA dash E on the bottom.
A.
Dash E.
Since these already exist as a policy passed and adopted in two thousand and six, I would suggest that you could approve this tonight, final, as a revision, rather than going through the whole process, unless you need.
All right, unless you need more time.
Well, I think we've kind of gone over this.
All set, we've.
So, the motion is to accept them, IICA, IICA dash R, and IICA dash E.
As revised.
As revised.
As revised.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, that we accept these three policies on the, uh, eighth grade graduation class trip as, um, revised. Any further discussion? All those in favor? So moved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, November financial report.
Passed those out earlier this evening, uh, for your benefit. Distributed one to the selectmen and one to the foreign finance committee. Budget's at sixty-six percent, uh, remaining. Uh, things are pretty much on target. Debt service has been paid and out of the way, thanks to Mr. Kryzak and the select board. Uh, all the others are, are pretty much on target. We had our first, uh, tuition payment, which was, uh, considerable, but, uh, looks in pretty good shape. Be more than happy to respond to any questions.
Do we know what the new rate would be yet, or?
Push your rate?
Tuition, yeah.
Down.
It's down? Yes.
We, we built into our budget a three-point, approximately a three-point-five percent increase over the eighty-four or eighty-six, something, um, for this year's current budget. The new rates have come out at eighty-seven plus.
Great.
I don't. It's a secret.
It's a secret.
It's a secret.
Okay. Um, now we have our budget scout, schedule calendar proposal.
Basically, uh, giving this to you this evening because it's getting close to the time where I need to distribute some, or discuss some dates with the warrant finance committee, uh, when they would like to, uh. November twenty-fourth has come and gone. Staff budgets have been presented to, uh, Principal Halliday and, uh, Special Ed Director Gordon. They're putting together their budget meetings, materials, and I'll have those. It says the twenty-third, but I'm gonna have them before the twenty-second, I hope. I think that they're pretty much ready to go. January sixth, preliminary budget to the school committee. It'll be mailed to you. Um, January tenth, I'm proposing a budget workshop. Uh, four hours, similar to what we did the last time. Uh, we'll even repeat the, the, uh, menu. You are.
He's just coming for the food, you know that.
That on a Saturday?
It's a Monday.
Monday.
Monday afternoon. Four to eight. Could go longer.
That's okay.
To eat.
As long as it's not early.
Two helpings. Then January eleventh is a regular school committee meeting, where we'll continue to talk. I've scheduled about an hour and a half, uh, for the budget workshop, and then we'll take an hour or so to do our school budget, our school, uh, business that needs to be taken care of. January twentieth, budget workshop. January twenty-fourth, another budget workshop. January twenty-seventh, another budget workshop. February eighth is a regular school committee meeting, where I would hope that we would be able to finalize the budget proposal for fiscal year twelve. I initially put fiscal year eleven, but changed my mind. Uh, and then to be determined is when the school committee would begin meeting with the foreign finance committee. Uh, with, I, I put two meetings, but there's always potential for more than that. I would hope that we could share the budget information initially with them. While you're going through the process, they're welcome to come to your meetings, find out what else is going on. Some of those meetings will potentially be televised. So, I think they'll have that information. Hopefully, with the information that they have from that, and what we are able to provide for them, we might be able to wrap it up in two or three meetings. But, once we find out if our schedule is good, then I'll talk with the town clerk to determine when the date for the, uh, public hearing is going to be for validation, uh, and when the vote would actually take place, because that's her Bailey Wick and not ours. She would set that up for us. And the last time I did it, I filled those dates in and quickly learned that I shouldn't have, so. We'll, once, once you adopt a schedule, then I can go ahead and, uh, talk with them. Now, that said, I've already noted some conflicts. We have some potential dates with the negotiations, and some of them fall on dates that we have scheduled here. So, we need to have that discussion. I think I brought that with me, as to what those dates might be, where there's a conflict. Uh, let's see. January twenty-fourth was a conflict. They have a potential schedule of four to eight, January. Nope, I think that's the only one.
Where'd you find that? Where'd that come from? With the negotiations, or is that, I mean?
Uh, you should've got it from the, uh, chair of the negotiations.
Yeah, there was something, oh. He, the acting one.
Yeah.
The school one.
Oh.
She doesn't get the school, she doesn't go to that one.
Well, it's not that I don't go there, I just.
No, but, yeah.
Oh, alright.
I would've ordered it to you, but.
Alright, well, okay, I'll have it.
Maybe get a copy of that for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. So, potentially the twenty-fourth, but we can always make an adjustment, uh, an adjustment, because that's, that's a budget workshop, not a regular school committee meeting. So, that potential exists there.
The selectmen and the warrant finance have agreed to do the meetings jointly, so if you figure we need two or three meetings, schedule them and we'll come here.
Okay, I'll, I'll touch bases with whoever's gonna do that with you.
Yeah.
Okay?
Um, are these, um, are these, generally, are these Mondays, uh, Mondays or Thursdays?
Uh, in, in January.
Yeah. What's the twentieth?
January tenth is a Monday.
January tenth is a Monday, yeah.
January eleventh is a Tuesday, that's our school committee meeting.
Right.
January twentieth is a Thursday.
Okay.
January twenty-fourth is a Monday.
Okay.
January twenty-seventh is a Thursday.
Okay.
February eighth is a Tuesday.
That's our regular meeting.
Okay, that's our regular meeting.
I'm just wondering if, I don't know what, what time you get home, Richard. I'm just wondering if we wanna move any of these up from seven to like six to.
Mondays you can move along.
Get started a little earlier.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would you like, would you like to start earlier on budget workshop date nights?
That's fine by me, yeah.
Six o'clock?
I'm off on Monday, so that's not an issue.
Six o'clock, sounds good to me.
Yeah, the, the rest of the meetings, even if you wanna move them up till six o'clock, I'll make it work.
Okay.
What do you think? You too?
Definitely, if everyone else can make it.
Six is better than.
Yeah.
Six o'clock, then.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll redo this and put them in at six.
If you want, maybe, you know, 'cause it's gonna be hard to change the teacher negotiation if we have that third party. Um, so maybe just make it Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, is that a possibility?
Uh, January twenty-fifth is a possibility. It, well, it's doable. It's doable. Instead of the, instead of the twenty-fourth.
Instead of the twenty-fourth.
We'll move it to the twenty-fourth, or twenty-fifth. Yeah, at six.
So, the groups that, there's a lot of groups here. Well, I don't know, who's coming there? It's just the regular people.
Okay.
It's not the special people.
That's good.
Now, is the tenth in stone before?
I'd be glad if you had it earlier.
I'll see if I can change my work.
Is it in stone?
I mean, are those, um?
Uh, nothing is in stone. I, I.
How do these fit into?
I wanted to try and.
Well, that's the only day that I'm working, but.
Which day is that?
The tenth. But, um, I'll see if I can change with someone.
Let me know, and if you're not able to, then we'll, we'll do a flip flop. I, I wanted to do the full budget overview before we got into the nuts and bolts, so. And I do wanna make lasagna, so.
Oh.
Well, we want you to make lasagna.
So, on the twenty, uh, on January eleventh, January twelfth, uh, excuse me, January twentieth, the twenty-fifth, and the twenty-seventh. Um, and also maybe on the February eighth, because we're gonna have the, the workshop along.
Yeah.
With school committee. We'll move all those dates, times up to six.
I'll move them all to six.
Yeah.
And I'll send you a new agenda Thursday.
Accept. Except January eleventh, that's.
But that's still up in the air. Jen, Jenak can let me know.
No, the eleventh is our regular meeting.
You wanna change that to six or not?
No.
Okay.
We'll leave that at seven.
Okay.
Well, if we're doing the budget workshop, we can do that ahead of the meeting, can't we?
Oh, true. We could do.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah, we could do that.
And you're not going till?
That's a good idea.
Ten thirty.
Six for the budget.
Six P M. Yes.
And hopefully by Thursday I'll have a date from the town as to. Okay, thank you.
Do you have a date that you'd like to? Say you'd like to do, you, you have a projection of where you'd like to do it, are we talking about March or?
I think we're talking April like we did last year. I thought last year's date worked okay.
That worked okay.
You're talking about the referendum?
Validation, public hearing, public meeting.
The public hearings, yeah.
And then the vote that takes place.
Okay, yeah.
I think was scheduled initially last year in May.
Right.
Some of their votes.
Everybody all set with our schedule?
It changes.
Until it changes. Alright, let's move on to.
We need, we need to be flexible.
Yes, we do. Let's move on to budget discussions.
Well, I, I just wanted to give you some information this evening is to, some information that we're getting from the state as far as tuition cost. What general purpose aid may look like, what it, what it's going to mean to us and how that's going to impact us. As far as EPS targets, you folks have been through all of that before. And I think with the reductions that you made last year, you're coming very close to being on EPS. So I, I just wanted to say that so we don't go back and revisit that all over again. Tuition has, has actually decreased from last year. Or increased very, very, very little. The state average is going to be eight thousand, seven hundred, ninety-eight dollars and forty-one cents. And last year it was eighty-six, eighty-four, somewhere in that neighborhood. So that's a very, very small increase. That's good for us in this current year's budget. Because we have, we budgeted more than that. I believe we budgeted ninety-two hundred or somewhere thereabout per student. Because historically they've gone up anywhere from three to six percent over the last ten years. This is the first one that I've seen that's nearly a wash. Just for your information, Sanford's tuition cost per student, seven thousand, two hundred, twenty-five dollars and seventy-three cents. Food for thought.
Oh, yeah.
So the tuition piece looks much better than it did a year ago. And it looks better for this current year's budget.
But we usually budget for a certain number of
Students.
Students, so how are we doing numbers wise?
Numbers wise, we're pretty much on target.
Okay. We didn't like have an influx of ten.
No, with what we budgeted last year, the numbers of students are pretty close to being right on the button. Projecting into next year, it appears that it might be about the same, maybe a, a decrease of two or three students. Now, what, what the new year brings as far as influx of students, can't be absolutely certain on that. But I have said over the last year, I prefer to budget for actual body counts that we know exist, that we anticipate will be here, rather than to try and build something into it and not have any real idea of what's doing that. I'd much rather come closer with the dollar amount than I would to try and get the actual number of people coming in or, or not coming. So tuition looks to be in pretty good shape and on target. Projection for general purpose aid. And, and you have to take this with a grain of salt because it's only December. Five years ago, they used to have to give you your two eighty-ones, now called two seventy-nines, in December. About this time right now. But now they pushed it off, we probably, we, we've got our last one three weeks ago for last year. Two seventy-nine. Taking the penalty away and reflecting that because we are in compliance. Anticipated for two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve's, it, it looks like we're going to lose definitely thirty thousand dollars. That our general purpose aid will be in the neighborhood of seventy-three thousand dollars. That's what we'll get for aid. Remembering that we had a debt service of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars that's gone. Puff, it's gone. We no longer have that, so that's not going to be a part of your GPA. So this past year, where we've had a hundred and two thousand plus the penalty being waived, receiving about two hundred and sixty thousand, somewhere thereabouts. That now is going to be down to seven, about, anticipated seventy-three thousand. Don't take it to the bank because Jim Raya says, don't take it to the bank because things could change. But you're going to have less money coming from the state to operate with. Expenditures, I've seen them coming in, are pretty much on target with this past year. Our salary and benefits are about sixty-five to seventy-five percent, give or take, where we come in of our budget. Tuition is about twenty-five percent, tw- little less than twenty-five percent of our total budget. Have no control over it. Special ed costs about eighteen percent. Have no control over those costs. Or very little control over those costs. So, we're, we're talking that we don't have a lot of costs that we're in control of. We have a transportation contract that takes about five percent of your budget. No control, other than you negotiate a contract. So expenditures, and we're in the middle of a negotiation, so we don't know where that's going to fall. That's a unknown. Staffing, we're pretty certain where that's going to fall. I've built in a, I believe a ten percent increase in Blue Cross Blue Shield Anthem. And we cross our fingers that it's less than that. But we, we never know.
Has there been any information coming from them?
Yeah. Not until, you, you may start hearing things in April or May. That's generally, they notify you first, second week in May of what the costs are gonna be for the next go around.
Cause the, the increase starts in July, so.
Yeah, it starts July one. The priority for budgets from my perspective, and I believe it's from the school committee's perspective, is that we need to make sure that anything we do with the budget doesn't adversely impact kids in the programs that they have. So that'll be the, I know that's the target of Sandy, I know that's the target of Trish. It certainly is the target of me, and I know that the board has been supportive of that over the years. Of making sure that we don't adversely impact on programs for kids. So last year was a tough year. And thanks to the staff and the support of the community, we were able to avoid a a red figure in our end of the year budget. And make sure that our liability for retirement was covered, which is a big piece of change. And still have some money left at the end of the year and have paid all of our bills and, and not having any negative impact as far as kids go. We, we've taken some hits with maintenance and those types of things. We had a nice winter. This current contract, we've got a nice price on oil. So my concern is, and I know Andy, one of Andy's concerns is, is what's oil gonna do? Right now it's well over three dollars. And we're paying two thirty-five.
Two thirty-six nine.
Two thirty-six nine. Per gallon, so we're, we've got money in there to cover that as long as we don't have a brutally cold winter. Last year we had a nice winter. Hopefully it's a lot like that, so. That's pretty much what I have as far as that is concerned. January sixth, I'll spring a big surprise on you. Questions?
Back to your percentage, it says twenty-five percent is, about twenty-five percent is tuition.
Twenty-five to, yeah, twenty-three to twenty-five percent is tuition.
And sixty, did you say sixty?
About sixty-five to seventy percent is staff salaries and benefits. I haven't done the, I've done it just quickly in my head and on pieces of paper. I haven't done it.
Calculatedly?
No, I haven't done that. Transportation, I know what that is, and I've just used rough, rough figures, but. Here's, my, my, my feeling is, is that we'll build a budget that we can live with. My concern is, we don't have a lot of money in the pot to carry forward to offset anything. And we're not going to get as much money from the state to offset any increases that we have, so it's gonna be a real tough time.
I thought we had fifty thousand or something, what did we have?
In what, in, carry forward? We've got about twenty-eight thousand is what we had left. Remember we took money and put it into the.
Right, but I.
And we took care of a, a paper deficit.
Yeah, the liability.
Previous year, right.
Anybody else have any questions?
Um, the only question I have, are we gonna schedule a time to sit with Sanford and discuss the, the tuition rate?
We, I, you know, I wrote them a letter and I made a call, a follow-up call, and we were supposed to be meeting with them in January. That's, that's the first date they could give us to meet with us because of all the things they have going on themselves.
On the process of building their own budget.
My, my my feeling is from conversations that I've had with some of the school committee members is that we cannot expect a cut in that for this school year. That we can talk about it when we re, when we when we renegotiate our contract, but, um, because of the fact that they also are, are struggling to figure out how they're gonna pay for things, cause they've taken such hits in their own. This is, they haven't actually come out and said this as a committee, but this is the, the message that I get from conversations that I've had is that we know not to plan on, on reduction for this school year.
It's understandable, but I think we, we need to discuss, cause it's time to negotiate the contract, you know, maybe some give and take for the following year's tuition.
Oh, they know we're looking for it. They're well aware that we're looking for it.
What are the surrounding school districts? I mean, I know the state average bump reported out, but those that are around us, Massabeesic, Noble, Wells, what are their high school?
I just.
Just wondering that, you know, well, you know, the state average, but.
I just didn't wanna make anybody feel bad, that's all. Uh, let's see. Get to the big numbers. Fifty-seven, seven thousand, three hundred and thirty, ninety-eight. And their, their tuition rate would be seven thousand, four hundred and four. RSU sixty, seventy-nine, oh three. Thirty-five would be another one, I guess. Close, nearby, somewhere. Eight thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight, state average.
Wells, which isn't an option.
You don't know Wells, do you really?
We used to send our kids there, I'm just curious.
Wells. Ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three, state average, eight, seven, ninety-eight. York, ten thousand, five hundred and three, state average. I think those are fifty-five maybe?
Before we had the contract with Sanford, we paid for the students to go to other schools, did we pay the state average? Is that what they were charging us? Like when the kids went to Wells and some went to Sampson, did we, we pay the state average?
Ted, I, I, I can't answer that because I wasn't here. However.
I think we paid more.
Paid more.
More than the state average?
No.
The state, the state law indicates that you pay the actual per pupil cost or the state average. That's the, that's the legislation.
Whichever is less.
Whichever is less. However, school committees can negotiate a higher rate. That's what's happened with Sanford.
When they. When the contract was, when the contract was, was drawn up, that was what was agreed to.
Right, but if you look back, what that part was all about was they were on a high list of being able to build and get rid of some of the, you know, the portable buildings and that was kinda. Well, I know, but that was part of the tuition cost that we were gonna be a part of that. And the other thing, looking at, uh, when the students went to Wells and went to Noble and maybe a couple other places, what ha- what happened at times, the students were jumping school to school. There were times when we were paying a school when there was no student there and paying the other school too because they were sending a bill. I mean, it took a long time to get a handle on that. We were paying for the same student, like, out of pocket, maybe sixteen thousand dollars and the.
I, I can assure you.
It was going.
That, that, uh, the ladies in the office and in the school office who take care of that attendance, madam stuff, that doesn't happen.
Not now, but I'm just saying, what was, had, we were following the kids that were, they were going, oh, it was good to go to Noble for about three months and they decided they wanted to go back to Wells and so the bill was coming. You know, it took a while to catch on to what was going on, and then when the new superintendent, you know, they really tightened up on all that. And we found that, no, you can't, you can't jump school to school, at least they, if they did, they actually got the student's name, find out, and didn't send that school that other money.
The parents were allowed to just take this student out of one school?
They wanted to go, sure.
A choice.
It was choice. And the bills just kept.
Another, another thing to, you know, to, to keep in mind is that kids that get involved in the vocational technical school, they go to their school. Like, we had kids that would go to Wells, get down to Wells, get off the bus, take another bus back to Sanford, and then take the bus back to Wells for a couple classes, and take the bus from Wells back to Acton, and that also happened from Noble and other places. So that was another consideration in, in going with the Sanford thing, and I know some kids, I know some kids got detention because their parents allowed them to drive directly to Sanford. their parents allowed them to drive directly to Sanford for their morning classes and then to Wells, and the school systems would not allow that. You had to go, be counted, be counted in attendance at the school, be at Wells or Noble, then take the bus, the Wells or the Noble bus, back to Sanford for the vocational classes, so. That was kind of convoluted, too.
Are you saying that Sanford doesn't make you do that? Cause that's what Stacy has to do. She has to take the bus from Acton to Sanford, then get on another bus from Sanford to Noble, go back to Sanford.
Right. But, yes.
That's
Sanford makes you get in there and sign.
You have to go with your class, right, that's what all the schools
I, I thought that you were saying Sanford didn't.
No, most of the kids were going to Sanford for the, for the
So they're driving past one school?
They're going right past the school they're going to.
It's kinda like when they went to Wells. Sorry.
Nope.
Judy.
Yes.
I, I was just wondering, I, I heard from, uh, well, on the internet, actually. You know, with Michelle Obama's new push for better nutrition for children, I believe that there is a federal program that's gonna be coming up, that depending on the t- dietary, uh, menu at the schools, if you meet, uh, X criteria, and I don't know if you guys have heard about it, then you will be eligible to get federal funds specifically for your nutrition program.
We do have a wellness program, and they do follow the guy, they have to
Yeah, but there's a new, Michelle Obama's
Well, Michelle Obama, she doesn't have all the answers, I mean, you know, I
No, there was a bill passed, we know there's a bill passed, and I'm sure Holly Hartley's right on it.
She's more time, Tom, I'm just gonna get out of my back pocket.
We're just looking for ways to, to get more money into the system.
We will, they will.
That's what he's talking about.
Right.
And I'm sure that Holly
Yeah, I mean, she's, the, she's
Pay attention to the change in the guidelines, to make sure we can
She's very much on the ball with stuff like
My second question is, are have we gotten, are, are we going to get the reimbursement for the money that we were paying because we fell into the donut hole, and that already transpired?
Yes.
That's, that's what I
In the budget?
I indicated that we had just received a new printout two seventy-nine, which is the state GPA, which reflected the fact that the penalty had been removed, and that money is now coming in.
Is that all at one time of, over a three-year period that we pay that penalty, or is that gonna be?
They sent us one very large check, but we sent it to the town because because the town paid the debt service upfront. And then we reimbursed them from the debt service that kept coming into us. And we had received about thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, through the first three months. And then we got a big check once they lifted the penalty after November first.
Now, we never paid the penalty, this was the first year that they were gonna take money away from us because they kept extending and extending it. So they never took money away from us before, so there's not three years of back money, it's just this one year, and it's this current year.
So you guys gave whatever bills that came up?
If we hadn't gotten the donut hole by June thirtieth and had the new plan in, then this year they would've taken the penalty away from us. Last year, they were supposed to do, but then at the very end, they changed it in the legislature to give us one more year. And that one more year got us into, you know, kept the, the school board got us into the donut hole, and then now they're not taking anything away from us, and we're treated just the same as any RSU, we get whatever they're gonna give us, which isn't much anymore. Thank you.
Basically, what he was saying, the GPA, what we had gotten was two hundred and sixty thousand, thereabout, and now this coming year projected is seventy-three thousand. So that's not because of a penalty, that's because everyone is getting a cut in GPA.
But the debt service was a hundred and
The debt service was a hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars of that.
Of the two hundred and sixty.
Right. Which up until this year, we, the town never had to actually cut a check for that. The debt service was always taken directly out of, uh, what the state was going to send to us. But this year, they changed their mind for some reason, and sent us a bill and said, you have to, you have to pay this debt service upfront.
And that's the money that
And that's the money that the
The town picked up.
And that's the money that we gave back to the town when that first check came back in for that.
They gave us a bill with five days to have it paid. And before, what they would do is just keep the money all year, and they paid the bill in June. And this year, they wanted it right upfront because it was our last payment.
Okay. Where am I on my agenda here?
Executive session.
Snack break, did you cook? She's, she asked to, she asked to be a part of the executive session, yeah. So, then I guess if we've covered everything All right, we'll, we're going into executive session.
I'll make a motion to go into an executive session.
Second. All in favor?